March 16, 2015, meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith will lead the invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Dear Father, as we come to you tonight, we ask you for your kindness and your wisdom, and you bestow upon us this wisdom to do and make the right decision for all of Anarundel County citizens. It is difficult in our capacity as elected officials to sometimes sort of get the whole picture, and I just pray that you give us all sort of the courage to see your vision and to vote your way, despite whatever our own individual wants and desires to be. We just want to sort of go in your will. And so with all these things, we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, Mr. Pruski has something.
Waiting for Ms. Jagow. There she is. Please join me. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we are about to honor someone who has worked very, very hard for this county for 12-plus years, and I do want to read this citation and just say a few words if I could. Ms. Veronica Jagow, in recognition of your hard work and dedication in service to Anarundel County government for over 12 years, always striving for a high-level, quality service to your constituents and all county residents, the County Council gives you congratulations and best wishes for a well-deserved, happy, and rewarding retirement. Let's give her a round of applause, everyone.
Hey, Veronica!
Will this buy me a one-way ticket to Florida? Thank you.
And I just want to finish for someone else who's from Buffalo, New York. In terms of the colder weather, she's actually moving south, so obviously she'll enjoy that, but we thank you for your years of service and everything you've done for this county. Thank you so much.
Excellent job, Veronica. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the County Council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Council briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda? We ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes. There's a little gray button. Make it red. Push it in. Gray, the gray one. Yes, ma'am.
I can follow directions.
There we go.
Good evening. My name is Kate Fritz, and I live at 40 Rockwell Court, and I'm here in my capacity as the Executive Director of the South River Federation. Our mission is to protect, preserve, restore, and celebrate the South River. Tonight, I want to tell you how important the watershed protection and restoration fee, the stormwater utility fee, is to building a local economy focused on restoring the priceless rivers and streams of Anarundel County. The sustained and predictable nature of this fee means that the South River Federation and other nonprofits can do more work to engage the private sector in a more predictable way to make local improvements with local dollars. Those are local dollars expended in local communities providing local benefits. Just recently, we applied for $250,000 worth of grant money through the utility fee program administered by the Chesapeake Bay Trust. We are bringing another $530,000 that we've leveraged from private resources and other grant resources to match that money, to make $780,000 available to local businesses. Local businesses that we partner with, like Green Vest, Environmental Quality Resources, Bay Engineering, Lino's and Blocker, Underwood and Associates, and Schumer, Inc., to do the design, engineering, permitting, and construction work for our restoration projects. We provide business to local supporting shops like Annapolis Copy and Print, Annapolis Accounting, Lithopress, Rice Graphics, Minuteman Press, Palate Pleasers, Post Taste Mailing, and Accurate Auto Service. We partner with local businesses like the Harbor Center, Annapolis Subaru Dealership, Crosby Marketing and Communication, Oak Grove Marine Center, and the Brick Companies to help them achieve their environmental stewardship goals. The watershed protection and restoration fee, as it is currently funded and structured, is a way to ensure that these small and medium-sized local businesses are able to continue to do business in Anarundel County. This dedicated, predictable, equitable, and sustainable funding source is exactly what our streams and local economy need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kinsey Potter, and I live at 1818 Woods Road, Annapolis, Maryland, and I also am here to talk about the stormwater fee and the watershed protection and restoration program. I'd like to remind everybody that Anarundel County is a leader in stormwater and knowing what to do about stormwater. The county has done an incredible job of assessing each of our creeks and streams and figuring out what the projects are that are going to make a difference to stop the sediment from coming down these streams caused by stormwater. Stormwater is the largest and the only growing source of pollution for our county, and the county knows what to do about it. The projects they have identified for the next five years, they've identified the projects, they know how much it's going to cost, and they know what they need to do. The program is well underway. In FY14, they started $62 million worth of projects, and they're able to do this because there is a dedicated funding source, and that funding source allows them to float bonds, which allows them to front-load the funding, which will permit them to meet the deadlines that they need to meet by 2025 and even sooner for the stormwater permit in the next five years. Okay, so we've got a program that's underway, and it is based on sound fiscal planning. It is, in fact, a utility model, very similar to water and sewer. We know how much it's going to cost to clean up the mess that's been caused by stormwater, and the ratepayers with their hard surfaces have been allocated fees in order to do that. We've got a sound program. It only makes fiscal sense to maintain that program. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to be here and address you tonight. My name is Jeff Holland. I reside at 307 Edgmere Drive in Councilman Trumbauer's district, but I work as the riverkeeper for the Weston Road River in Councilman Walker's district. Councilman Walker just helped us complete one of our award-winning programs through the Chesapeake Bay Trust, where we planted, we had 600 kids from the local schools plant 700 trees on four acres of muddy hillsides, solving one of the biggest sediment pollution sources in the Road River. We're very proud of that, and we want to do more of that, and we can do more of that through this fee program. We've applied for another $100,000 in funds through the Chesapeake Bay Program, Chesapeake Bay Trust, which is a highly competitive program. We hope we get it. But when we do, we'll put this to work in solving another problem along Shadyside Peninsula where there is excess flooding across Shadyside Road, and this is solving a problem that isn't going to be addressed in any other way anytime soon. And we're going to match that with $27,000 worth of funds we already received from Chesapeake Bay Trust. We've already done the design work. We're ready to go. This is a shovel-ready project. This is an example of how we can put our local dollars to work solving all our local problems. We have this unique opportunity to give our grandchildren the gift of rivers that are clean and swimmable and fishable and crab-able and kayak-able and leave them the way they were in our grandparents' time. We have this opportunity. We can do it together, and we need this program to achieve that. Gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Earl Bradley. I live at 940 Bay Forest Court Road, Bay Forest Court, apartment 306, Annapolis, Maryland, I've worked for a number of years as a member of several organizations to get one shed restoration protection fund underway. For a long time, we were not able to address the critical problem of runoff from early-developed areas. With the stormwater fee, we have a long-term guaranteed source of funding that never could be met from the general fund, given the other demands there, to carry out hundreds of millions of dollars of projects to, as our previous speaker said, make not only the Chesapeake Bay suitable for crabs and oysters, but also our local creeks and rivers available for fishing and swimming. As I calculated, it only costs less than 25 cents a day for the average property owner to adequately fund this program. I would urge you not to alter this program for a couple of years now that it's up and running and we can see its benefits. I hope that you will give this consideration, even though we've had flaws, because we do have several other people in the audience who support the effort, who will not burden you with our talk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello. My name is John Anthony. I live in Councilman Fink's district at 635 Ross Drive in Pasadena, Maryland. I also am active in my own community. I've been a board leader and instituted some waterfront projects, and that's how I got interested in the watershed, not only from that capacity, but having fun with these waters since I was 14. I'm 60 now, and I have seen the differences in the water quality over my lifetime. What really concerns me, and I've had correspondence with Ms. Sutherland, your county auditor who serves at your pleasure, and I've looked at the debt profile on this bill, and if you eliminate these fees, it's absolutely scary what you do to the funding in our county. She has warned you, and I'm here to reiterate that, that you have our bond rating at risk. If you keep this as a stormwater utility fee, then what happens is this, is you get a much more preferential rate, you're guaranteed to the bond-rating agencies that we'll be in a position that we'll be able to pay this off. If you try to wrap this into the general fund with everything else that's going on in this county, this program will fall apart. This is a rate-stabilized approach. The other thing I'd like to indicate is that one of the documents that Teresa sent me in correspondence, which she has sent to all of the County Council, is what this does to our debt per capita. In 2000, it was a little over 1,400. In 2020, it's going to be a little over 2,000. That's per capita. That means that's about $1,500, $1,600 a home that you layer on top, and that's under the existing program. That's not trying to wrap this other stuff into the program and into the general fund. We already have a maintenance of effort on schools. It's far lower than what some of our other counties have, and we're actually paying far lower taxes than surrounding jurisdictions. So please, 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 keep this funding program in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional testimony? Seeing no movement in the audience. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson. I apologize.
We're going to get you a chair there with your name on it.
I was focused on the podium there.
I'm passing the cup around just so you know that.
My apologies. Please.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. It's wonderful to see lots of people come and turn out and speak during the invitation to the audience, and tonight I planned to mention that this concept stems from Old English law and from various sundry rebellions and things. You know, I come regularly, and I remind you about the fact that the county officials allow my neighbors to discharge their human waste, use my land to absorb it. We've talked about toilet paper. We've talked about donuts. Tonight, I brought you cookies with a hole in the middle. It's not the hole that counts. You absorb the waste in the soil, so you have cookies that are chocolate to remind you about the absorption of the waste, but they taste good. You know, because if you laugh, you remember. Now, since tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day, we wanted to remind you about the wearing of the green. You see, what happened was that with the Irish rebellions, well, okay, with the religious wars, the English sent Cromwell into Ireland first to get the English people they'd put in charge to make the Irish obey the laws and comply and submit. And when that wasn't as successful as they wanted, Cromwell essentially attacked a church where there were 1,000 people who had gone to surrender, and they slaughtered all of them in the church. And so when you talk about, you know, they're hanging men and women for the wearing of the green, it was because green symbolized, you know, the Catholic Church as opposed to the Protestant Church, and so there's a conflict. I don't know how many of you know about the orange issues, but at any rate, you know I come to ask for your help as part of this. It's embodied in the First Amendment that Congress shall make no law, you know, and that restricting, oh, dead wrong. It all went away. Well, anyway, the upshot is that Congress shall make no law that prevents a party to petition the government for redress of grievances. So I'm here, as are these other people, asking you to help redress the grievances.
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
So I wrote some stuff. I'm not going to give you my green beads because I need them tomorrow, but you can have the toilet paper and the cookies.
Thank you.
Because we want you to remember, if someone were discharging their human waste on your property, you would not like that.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Ms. Chairman, while he comes up, Ms. Johnson, I may take you up on those cookies, too. I'm a cookie connoisseur, so those are one of my favorite brand of cookies, just FYI.
Because they're elves. They aren't leprechauns. I didn't find any leprechaun cookies, but the Kinko or Elvis were supposed to back them.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Peter D'Souza. I'm the CEO of Hope House Treatment Centers located in Crownsville, and I'm here to talk about the zoning for addiction treatment programs. The bill is about to be introduced. We need...
Sir, excuse me, sir. Are you talking, are you referring to the bill that's on the agenda?
Yes.
Guarding methadone clinics?
Yes.
Okay.
It is for all addiction treatment programs and not only just for addiction treatment.
Right, but the topic of, the topic for testimony is on the agenda, so this isn't the time for that. It would be later when we're actually hearing, there's a public hearing on the bill.
Okay.
So I'll be sure to call you up as soon as we have that bill being heard.
Thank you.
That's okay.
All right.
Yes, no problem. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 1815, An Ordnance Concerning Grants Special Revenue Fund. Bill 1915, An Ordnance Concerning Finance Taxation and Budget Revenue Reserve Fund.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill 1315 out of order? Do you have a motion, please?
No. Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill 1315 out of order is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1315.
An Ordnance Concerning Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Marzick et al.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Bill 1315, before you, will establish Retiree Health Benefits Trust. It provides for financing and management of the Retiree Health Benefits Trust, and it also creates a Board of Trustees of the Retiree Health Benefits Trust. We also will be offering some amendments to this bill, and we can either discuss those now or if you'd like me to wait until after we go for questions.
We have the public.
Okay. We have John Hammond from the Office of Budget, John Peterson from the Office of Personnel, Nancy Duden from the Law Office, as well as Barry Downey, who's outside counsel, has been involved in this issue.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the Council?
Sure.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an acknowledgement, we had a pretty robust discussion about this bill at the work session. I certainly don't feel the need to rehash that up here, but I just wanted to applaud you guys for bringing forth what looks like a good package of amendments, and I'll look forward to talking about that at the voting session, but thank you guys for being responsive to some of our concerns.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to ask...
Ms. Smith.
Bernie, I always mess up your last name.
Marzick.
Marzick, if you could just quickly, for the audience's sake, just briefly describe what this bill does.
This bill creates a retiree trust for county employees for their health benefits.
Well, he, it was certainly in...
Yes, simply. If you'd like more...
I'll add additionally to that, Mr. Smith, that this is a result of over two years that myself and the two former council members spent on this topic. The result of those meetings over a year, year-and-a-half-long period that Mr. Hammond attended on a weekly basis with myself and two other council members, members of the employee groups. There were a number of changes to the health care program within the county and a number of recommendations that came out of that committee that I served on with Mr. Hammond and a number of other folks. Mr. Peterson was there as well, and we've made some changes, and this essentially will set up a trust fund that's similar to the fund that we have set up for pensions. Right now, the county is funding and paying for our health care liability for retirees on an annual basis, and we have not set any money aside, no asset, to offset the liability that we've incurred. And so this will establish, this bill establishes that fund and allows us the capacity to start putting money into that fund, in a protected fund, that will not only sort of offset that liability that we have, but also prove to the bond-rating agencies and other folks that are looking at our financial reports that we have a plan to deal with this liability that we've incurred and has built up over the past 20, 30-some-odd years.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the Council? Seeing none, I guess we'll just have you, why don't you just hold right there because I don't have anybody signed up, and if we have anybody come down, we'll just have them at the podium. Is there anyone who would open up a public hearing on this bill, on Bill 1315? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on 1315? Come down, and if you'll use the mic at the podium there, that'll help. Good evening again, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. As one of your older people who come and testify, you know, when you get old, you get worried about medical care, and it's more, you know, it's a really, it's a real issue, and you see your friends and their bills and the things that they deal with and cope with. Last week, the state government was dealing with bills related to end-of-life, particularly death with dignity bills, and I was asked to go testify in support of the bill because I've known Dick Israel for more than 25 years, and the bill is partly named after him because he's suffering from Parkinson's. When I got there, I discovered that the disabled community was there in force, and they have great fears and great concerns about the reduction in funds for their care and the potential of people being declared, you know, well, potential, you know, potential abuse of assisted suicide when people were not ready to have assisted suicide, or did not want assisted suicide. And there were a lot of medical people there who were very much opposed, and the discussion was much broader, and I think that it's important for people to understand with an aging population, there are an awful lot of issues related to health care. The costs are huge. There must be better ways to do this, you know, to provide health for folks or health care for people. Yesterday, C-SPAN had a woman from, shoot, an organization that's really concerned about the excessive use of expensive pharmaceuticals and what we're spending on pharmaceuticals. There are 10,000, you know, approved medications, and most physicians barely know 100 of them because, you know...
Please summarize with Johnson.
Sure. Because the people who stand to make money are the ones out there making noise, and we need to find a better way.
Thank you.
So I'm concerned that the employees may not have the health care that they've worked hard to earn.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else wishing to speak on 1315? Seeing no additional folks, we're going to close the public hearing on 1315. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1315.
An Ordnance Concerning Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Thank you. We have several amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
This amendment makes the ordinance effective July 1, 2015.
Thank you.
Move to adopt.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, your amendment?
This amendment changes the effective date of the bill to July 1, 2015.
Any questions from the...
If you would like more clarification, Mr. Smith, I'll be willing.
Is there a reason for it to be changed to July 1, 2015?
If I might, Chairman, the reason is that in speaking with both Ms. Sutherland and the Controller, it was determined that if the bill went into effect prior to the new fiscal year, there would be a great expense and difficulty to do a partial-year audited financial statement for the trust. So if we do it beginning July 1, it will start off on the first day, and we won't run into that problem.
Thank you. That's the explanation I was looking for. Perfect. I have a motion to adopt in a second. We've had some discussion. Any additional questions from the Council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment One is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Amendment Number Two.
This amendment corrects a reference to the term fiscal year and adds a method for making contributions to the trust from certain health benefit payments.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Move to adopt. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Duden on these questions.
Wise move, Ms. Duden.
Thank you.
I would actually, if I may, just to be clear, is that we're offering these amendments, and then we also will be coming back to the Council on April 6 with amendments to the actual trust itself, which we'll get into, and those amendments to the trust are going to be based on the actions taken by the Council tonight to amend the actual legislation. So there's kind of a two-step process here, and I think Ms. Duden will probably get into that in some of her comments, but just to be clear, is to, these amendments will be the first step, and then the amendments to the actual trust itself will be the second part of that process.
Mr. Pruski?
Mr. Marzick, you've been having collaborative conversation with the employee groups. Certainly, this isn't huge changes from what we see, but, you know, there's amendments being made and other things. Is information being shared and discussed?
I have not spoken to them, but I'll defer to Ms. Duden and Mr. Peterson for that.
We have had collaborative discussions with both the auditor and with the other parties to the trust agreement, the library and the community college. We have not had discussions with the employee groups because we really haven't made any substantive changes that would affect their ability to get benefits from this.
I understand, and certainly there's negotiations, other thing right now, but anything that could impact them, we want to work in collaboration. We may not always agree, but it's important that we share this, so I would highly encourage that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have something to add?
On the amendment?
Just to make it clear for the Council, there was an injunction granted by the Circuit Court for Anarundel County on Friday to the health benefits portion of those negotiations, so we are at status quo until that litigation is resolved, not that that affects this trust, but just in terms of...
Understood.
Where we are with health benefits and negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the Council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Amendment Number Three.
This amendment clarifies the required standings of employees eligible to become trustees and changes the manner in which the Board of Trustees shall be composed by making four trustees subject to appointment by the County Executive and confirmation by the County Council.
Thank you.
Move to adopt. Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman, I believe that this amendment addresses the concerns raised by Councilman Smith at the work session. Previous to this amendment, there was only one employee that was going to be appointed... was going to be appointed by the county executive. We now have four employees that will be appointed by the county executive, and all four of those will then have to be approved by the county council by resolution.
Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
And that's the way the other trust funds are set up, is that right?
That's correct.
Same, four and four confirmation. Thank you.
Yes.
In the pension trust fund, the elections are the elections, and they're not subject to either appointment or confirmation. And the expenses are...
Mr. Peterson for the record.
I'm sorry, John Peterson, Deputy Personnel Officer.
But we do confirm...
You confirm a lot of the various boards and commissions.
But nothing to do with the pension board.
In the pension trust fund, you confirm no one. The public members, the two, the three public members.
The employee members in that are subject to election, and once they're elected, they are who they are.
Sure.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Amendment Number Four.
This amendment changes the duties of the Board of Trustees by removing the duty to prepare and deliver certain annual reports and by adding the requirement that annual trust statements be published by September 30 of each year.
Do you have a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Duden?
This, again, in conversation with both the auditor and the controller, it was determined that rather than have one set of financials that really weren't audited and had no effect, and then audited financial statements at sort of a random time, that what was really needed was one set of audited financial statements that would be given by September 30 every year, so that the controller would then have time to include them in the year-end CAFR. So we have taken out the one set of financials and just done audited financial statements by September 30 every year.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Four is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Amendment Number Five.
This amendment recognizes that amendments to the trust agreement must also be approved by the county council and kept on file with the agreement.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Duden?
Again, this one's pretty self-explanatory, but concern was raised at the work session that the council would like to see and approve or disapprove any amendments to the trust agreement. And in fact, that is in keeping with the historical legal advice of the Office of Law, that if the council approves the initial agreement, they also have to approve any amendments thereto.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Five is passed.
Thank you. Bill Number 1315 as amended will be heard on April 6, 2015.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, Ms. Trumpauer?
Could we have a little bit more discussion on the bill since we passed this series of amendments? Is that...
Not appropriate right now, yet.
Okay. Can I just have a closing statement?
Sure.
Thank you. I believe Madam Auditor has been keeping a scorecard of the other issues that we brought up in the work session, and by my understanding of what you said about the next meeting, bringing forth some more amendments and actually amending the trust, I'm thinking that if we want to do anything else to the bill, it should happen next time. So I'm hoping that you might work with the auditor to see if we can collaborate on any further issues, so.
Yeah, it's our intention at this time that the only amendment we will bring forward on April 4 is an amendment to accept the revised trust agreement, and that all the other points raised by the auditor, along with the amendments you voted on tonight, can be, because those amendments don't require codification, the other things, they will be made in the trust agreement, and we will get you a revised copy. So there will be one amendment on April 2, which will be asking you to accept the revised trust agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry if I outstepped the protocol there.
No, you're fine. No worries. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1215.
An ordinance concerning planning and zoning general development plan for Anne Arundel County Transportation Plan.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Marzak, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 1215 adopts the revision to the general development plan for the county, amending the functional classification map for county roads to reflect new roads and changes in the character of existing roads. The most recent map was updated in 2009. Here to answer any questions the council may have are Larry Tom from Planning and Zoning, as well as George Cardwell from Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Larry Tom, Planning and Zoning Officer. At the work session a week or so ago, there were some issues and some questions raised about the, our recommendation to change Maryland 4 to a freeway classification. And since then, George and I have had some conversations about that. We'd like to just take a moment or two and share some more of our thoughts about why we're making that recommendation, just so that you have a little bit more information as you deliberate the bill. So I'm going to turn this over to George, who'll fill you in on some of our thoughts.
Thank you. For the record, George Cardwell, Planning Administrator, Transportation Division, Office of Planning and Zoning, Anne Arundel County. Maryland 4, Southern Maryland Boulevard, as it's better known as, in Anne Arundel County, is about 4.7 miles in length. It's a four-lane divided road, partially with service roads and with partial access controls. The access controls are pretty substantial between the Patuxent River and Maryland 258 West Bayfront Road. South of 258, the access controls and the horizontal and vertical geometry of the road, the way the road is designed, is less fitting of a freeway functional classification. However, even with that road as it is south of 258 and as the road is north of 258, today's traffic is roughly about 55,000 average daily vehicle trips. That's slightly less than what's actually on, dare I say, at Forest Drive between Hilltop and Chickapin Round Road, for instance, which carries around 60,000. It's comparable to Maryland 2 around McKenzie Road, which carries about 52,000 average daily vehicle trips, and is far less than what's on Maryland 3 in the vicinity of Defense Highway, which carries about 72,000 average daily vehicle trips. The road itself, though, does carry high-speed, long-distance trips primarily because of Calvert County's export of labor outside of Calvert County and up into Prince George's County and Washington, DC area, sort of inside the Beltway, if you will. Over 60% of the travel, over 60% of the workforce in Calvert County does not work in the county, and predominantly, that traffic comes up Maryland 4 every day. Within Prince George's County, on the opposite side of Patuxent River, the road is gradually being upgraded to a freeway. It's identified as a freeway on the Prince George's County plans. It's identified as an arterial on the Calvert County plans. And so we're sort of our four and a half miles or so sort of stuck in between those two situations. Calvert County is identified...
And we're currently an arterial?
It's a, in the current, in the 2009 plan, it's identified as a principal arterial.
And Calvert County's is principal arterial or just arterial?
They just call it an arterial. They do not, they don't differentiate.
So is there, so is it an arterial, and then principal arterial, and then freeway? Is that the classification?
That's correct. That's correct. Right. And Calvert County has approached the Maryland Department of Transportation in their construction priority letter, recommending that the state evaluate and try and begin design work on the portion of Maryland 4 that's actually within Anne Arundel County, which begins to make sense, because it's comparable. A lot of times, we have exporting labor counties, that they need the roads fixed outside of their own county. And it's a comparable situation. My days in Prince George's County was always Indian Head Highway and Branch Avenue for the same reason with Charles County. So it's not an uncommon recommendation for something like that to happen. Functional class actually goes to how the road is used, not how the road is designed. The purpose of a functional class map is twofold. First off, to recognize what's actually happening, and secondly, to be a planning guide into the future about how a road should be redesigned to meet the actual need of other motorists in that area. And then through things like complete streets and context-sensitive design, which you hope is the design of that road, and when it's redesigned, meets the context of the area, and which is that if it's in a rural area, you certainly don't want to over-urbanize the road. If it's in a suburban area, you don't want to over-urbanize the road or make it a more rural section. And that's really a result of design. The road itself, the right-of-way itself, from the, pretty much linear, from the Patuxent River to the Calvert County line exceeds 400 feet. That's actually, for people that are into this stuff, that's actually wider than a lot of parts of the Capitol Beltway, as far as right-of-way is concerned. It has a lot of right-of-way.
But it's only two lanes.
It's only, it's two lanes in each direction, plus the service roads. And actually, the right-of-way is measured from the outside of the service roads all the way across. Beat up the microphone there. But the idea behind that being the fact that, you know, they have all of that right-of-way to work with. So overall, it really does function like a freeway. There are certainly, in a further future design, consideration is going to have to be taken about the fact that as the road enters Calvert County, once you're in Calvert County, it's, road functions, the road has a much different design with considerably more access. In fact, there are some places where there are residential driveways that actually enter into Calvert County, into Maryland 4 in Calvert County. There's also, the first traffic signal is introduced down in Dunkirk. So it's about a mile or so below the county line. So whatever design goes forward, and whatever the functional class goes forward, it's going to have to take that into consideration in final design in any event. But it truly does function like a freeway in the fact that there are very few places where there is, where the access has deteriorated to the point where there's a lot where there are driveways. There are certainly smaller, lower functional class roads involved in accessing that, so there's conflict as you approach the Calvert County line as a result of that situation. But the traffic volume itself carries through over 50,000 all the way through. So it's definitely through traffic that we're dealing with, more than local traffic. 408, Bayard Road introduces something in a range of about 3,000 cars a day into Pennsylvania, into, as you were, into Southern Maryland Boulevard. 258 introduces something in a range of about 5,000 cars a day. So predominantly, it's through traffic between Calvert County into Prince George's County, either all the way to the Capitol Beltway, all the way to DC, or somewhere in between. So staff recommendation is based on the fact that we believe that Southern Maryland Boulevard does function like a freeway, although we would all readily admit it is not designed like a freeway.
If, if the section that you're referring to, north of 258, if they're going to be improved, I mean, there are already some bridges, some flyovers, a service road, exits merging off, exits merging on. If you were going to redesign that road to be a freeway, what would you change to that section?
You would introduce wider inside shoulders to meet the ASHTO standard, a traditional ASHTO standard for 60 mile an hour design speed. Now, roads posted for 55, so more than likely stays close to that mark. You would introduce...
So you'd add more lanes?
No, actually, you'd be adding shoulders, not lanes as much as breakdown areas, maneuver areas. You might, depending on future forecasts, increase the amount of merge distance where the interchanges are with 408 as well as with 258. More than likely, make improvements at where 258 and 794 come together to allow the traffic to enter northbound Maryland 4. They're likely substandard for future forecasts in that area, even though we don't anticipate a lot of growth in that area. You would anticipate more growth on the main line, and so the merge distance would have to be increased as a result of that. More than likely, those would be the result of modifications to the north. There doesn't appear to be, from forecasts that we've seen, there doesn't appear to be a need for a fifth and sixth lane, but actually just a, an improvement to the geometry of the inside lanes by adding a wider inside shoulder. Inside shoulder typically should be somewhere between six and eight feet in length and width, and that's clearly not the case here. The outside shoulder is standard, probably 10 feet. Probably is sufficient.
If you were going to upgrade 4, Route 4, ignoring the fact that we're Anne Arundel County, you're just looking at this, and you work for State Highway Administration, let's say, and you're looking at the whole stretch of road from Calvert Line all the way up to the Beltway, would you start in Anne Arundel, or would you start up near the Beltway?
It's already underway and near the Beltway. There are three remaining signals between the Beltway and Upper Mark. There's a signal at Sutland Parkway at Maryland 337. There's a signal, still remains at Dowra House Road around Andrews Air Force Base, and they recently upgraded the Woodyard Road, Maryland 223, to an interchange with Pennsylvania Avenue. So the last really remaining barrier is a signal at Dowra House Road, which will ultimately be pulled.
But along that stretch of road, there aren't any flyovers or exit ramps, on-ramps, or very few service roads, if there are any. It's mostly intersections.
There are very few services.
It's mostly hard intersections, basically, people coming into that, into the road at a T.
Right. Prince George's County's transportation functional master plan identifies that as a freeway and has done so certainly since the 80s as a freeway. I think their designation is, let's say it's F4, F6, one or two, but in any...
So it's been since the 80s that they've classified it as a freeway, when in fact it actually hasn't been by definition?
Right, right. Because ultimately, that's, they do that also to preserve right-of-way, so a freeway dimension for right-of-way is certainly wider than it would be for a principal arterial. And so a lot of what the Park and Planning Commission does in identifying what a road's functional class is, is what is the future intent for the, for needs of right-of-way, and also for setbacks for development that's adjacent to the roadway.
And don't they already have, I believe, as I recall, driving on that road, closer to the Beltway, a shoulder that turns into an active lane during certain hours, with an X that, you know, appears after, say, 9:00 AM or 9:30 or something?
They do that, and part of that has to do with the traffic signals that remain as a matter of just eking a little more capacity out of what they have in the way of roadway. And whether or not that would stay the same after, after all the signals are removed and the interchanges are constructed, probably would be driven by a bargain at that point. And it's also, as you know, a very highly directional road.
Got it. Any questions from the council? Mr. Pruski?
Just quickly, Mr. Cardwell, because I had a constituent ask about this. Wach Chapel and Route 3 corridor, certainly the Michigan U's were added. Of course, there's a proposed interchange there. Is there anything on the horizon?
Not for the interchange itself. The interchange is caught up in an environmental assessment, actually, environmental impact statement, it's been around that long, and of Maryland 3 from US 5301 all the way up to Maryland 32. So this is a component of that larger project. In order to obtain federal funds, which would be an 80/20 mix, certainly favorable to do it that way, to be able to construct, design and construct that interchange, it's going to require the completion of the decision document and the recorded decision. And that's held up right now with the resource agencies, primarily Corps of Engineers and Fish and Wildlife Service.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I do have one other question. I guess, the three intersections that you mentioned, that's traffic volume exceeded the stretch along Route 4, you mentioned, and forgive me, I tried to scribble them down, Forest and Chickapin, somewhere on the Ritchie Highway, and then three in Defense Highway.
Right.
Are either of those three considered freeways? How are they classified?
Forest Drive is, and that portion is considered to be a principal arterial from Chickapin Round Road, from the end of Aristie Allen to Hilltop, and then it transitions back to a minor arterial and then all the link to a collector further down.
So as you're going up Forest Drive, coming out away from Bay Ridge, it goes from arterial to principal arterial to freeway, correct?
That's correct.
So there's a transition as we head forward?
Right, exactly. Both Maryland 2 and Maryland 3 are classified as principal arterials.
Got it. Any additional questions? Seeing none. I do, we do have some folks signed up to speak on this. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on Bill 1215, and I will start off with the three individuals who are signed up to speak, Patricia Melville, Bonnie Sudnick, and Betty Shouman. You all would please come forward this time.
Do I have to push the button?
Yes, ma'am. I think you're on, is it red, is there a gray button?
Yeah, it's red.
It's red, you're live.
Okay, all right.
Just name an address for the record, and then have at it.
Okay. My name is Patricia Melville, and I, I live in the area around Route 4 in Lothian, also known as Bristol.
You were the one who was here during the work session?
Yes, I, I attended the work session, and-
You snuck in, I didn't see you back there, but you were paying attention, I'm glad you were here.
Yes, yes, I was paying attention. And, and I was interested in the remarks that, that were just made. I sort of altered some of what I'm going to say, because I don't want to repeat myself. I'm, I'm having trouble with the legality and the logic of declaring that portion of Route 4 a freeway. It's not a freeway, and trying to define it as a freeway just somehow doesn't make any sense. The code definitely offers a definition of a freeway, and Route 4 does not meet that definition. There are, at grade intersections, and what, there's at least one driveway that abuts directly on Route 4. So from that, from a legal standpoint, I don't think it meets the definite, the correct definition. And declaring a road a freeway for some future benefit, I'm not sure that's necessary. I don't quite, maybe I'm missing something. But it doesn't seem like it's really necessary. The State Highway Administration controls the road, and they will make the final determination as to any improvements that might be made. And as far as I know, there are no plans on the books to make any improvements along that section of Route 4. I mean, roads with current freeway status such as 50, 97, 32, 10, you know, those are logical. But anyone who's driven on that section of Route 4 in Anarundel County would in no way define that as a freeway. It just does not meet that, that status. Mr. Walker is apparently going to offer an amendment to this bill, and I firmly support that amendment, and, and hope you all give it a good consideration. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time. Ms. Sudnick?
Hi, Bonnie Sudnick, 5636 Gunner Run Road, Churchton, Maryland. And I'm having difficulty, I drive this road every day, to and from DC. Today, for the first time in months, because of construction, I came out Pennsylvania Avenue. The whole place, from the time you leave DC, is a minefield. It's terrible. We at Bristol, we don't have service. We deal with potholes. It's a daily life, year in and year out. The service road, 980A, B and C, particularly B on that part of Southern Maryland Boulevard, is nothing but a minefield. It never had a proper underlay. It was a chip stone road over gravel with a high center. That said, the road, people seem to think it's perfectly fine, but the buses and the grain chorks just beat it to a pulp. And the streams underneath, that washes out the gravel, they've had to replace it aside. Maryland Route 4, old Southern Maryland Boulevard, that does have direct property access, west and northbound, Route 4 is the only highway in this country that is designated northwest, south, and east. It's a dual-designated road. But that section from Calvert County to Bristol inbound to DC is nothing but a minefield after this winter. We won't see any service. This is why Commissioner Sloganhop from Calvert County contacted the state people to get that section of the road, shoulders, better foundation, wider roadway, because that's the original in-and-out road to DC when we were little children. It was just unbelievable. So I support not having this road upgraded, because we don't get any service, any service that the state wants to do. They can do it without upgrading it.
Thank you, Ms. Sudnick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shouman?
Hi, my name is Betty Shouman. I'm at 1036 Upper Pendle Road in Lothian, 20711. Route, Route 4, especially the northbound lane, is really treacherous. There are no shoulders whatsoever. In some cases, the roadway is so high that if you dropped a tire off, you would turn over, and it happens. There are a number of accidents out there, which are simply because of drivers inattention. To upgrade this road will take quite a few years, to put flyovers, service lanes, everything. People live on both sides of that road, and the worst thing is, is when they, you come up out of Route 260, and you want to go south, you have to merge across suicidal traffic to your left and to the breakdown lane at Lower Pendle Road, and then cross over and merge back into South Lane of Route 4. Other areas don't have a proper de-acceleration lane, so you can't use them. And if you live on the western side of Route 4, you have to cross over, the same way with people who live on the eastern side and they're coming south, they, they have to cross over somewhere. So they'll, they'll choose wherever they can do it safely. And there's very few safe areas there. The whole road needs work. And I really support not having this being called a freeway before it's really upgraded to something that can be used. It, it does get a lot of traffic, but it's not traffic-worthy. I understand that the state of Maryland classifies it as an F failure. That's it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this bill? Again, I ran out of my sign-up list, and, and you weren't there, so I was ready to move on. Yes, ma'am.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. When I was in college, we had a new invention, you know, moving past the chalkboard, you know, the blackboard with the white chalk, they got new things they called overhead projectors. But they were new, and props didn't know how to use them very well. And so the standard joke was, well, it's another one of those invisible visual aids, because you couldn't see what they were, the point they were trying to make, because they could draw it better on the old blackboard. Well, I don't want to be critical of anybody else's problems, because I made enough of my own invisible visual aids over my teaching career, but I really had trouble making sense out of what was going on with the materials that are presented here with, with the bill. But more importantly, as you know, development follows highways and sewers. And so if we call Route 4 a freeway, what are the consequences in terms of development in South County? And you know, you've heard it over and over again, the residents of South County have come before you to testify, keep South County rural. You certainly want and need to provide safe and adequate transportation, but do you really want to be stimulating development? You know, who winds up benefiting from that kind of development? Because we tend to know, it tends to usually be developers and not the people who live there. And so I would ask, you know, to what extent you notified the residents along that part of the road? Because there is a Supreme Court case, and I have the name, and I, a senior moment, I forgot it. But at any rate, there are two requirements. You have to be, give people notice, and they have to-
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
You know, when people are impacted, you have to give them notice, and you have to give them opportunity to defend against a particular matter. So I would hope that you would, you know, at least, you know, re-advertise or notify those local residents. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this bill? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill 1215 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 1415.
Adnornance Concerning Zoning State-L licensed Medical Clinics.
Thank you, Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a bill that's, in reference to a specific issue that happened in my district, but I think we're seeing it happening a lot throughout the county, and that's these types of clinics, methadone clinics, opening up in what I would consider very, very residential areas. And so my attempt here is to just kind of control where these clinics can open through zoning code, pretty much like we control any type of business opening through zoning. So what this bill would do is put some conditional uses on these clinics opening in C1, C2, C3, C4, W1, W2, and W3, as well as the mixed uses CE and T. The conditional uses, there are several of them. It would prevent these facilities from opening within 1,000 feet of a dwelling, public park, school, or religious facility, some issues with the traffic and parking as well, as well as loitering. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith?
I just want to sort of piggyback as well and say, I think, I think the intent of this bill isn't necessarily to prevent methadone clinics, as the sponsor has stated, but I do agree that they should be in a proper place, and surely believe that residential areas are not, not the place that they should be located in. So I'm fully, fully supportive and co-sponsor this bill, and I know the administration is going to weigh in on it as well, but wanted to sort of lend my support to this effort in addition, just because I know we have several methadone clinics in my district. And so I know how the residents up there were very adamant about those projects when they did occur. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Marzick, Mr. Tom?
Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. As we mentioned at the work session, we have made some recommendations for technical amendments to the bill. We do support this bill, provided those amendments are offered tonight. And Larry Tom from Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law are here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Trump, out. I am, sir. This is probably directed to Mr. Swain. When, when the original issue that, that the sponsor brought up in his district was happening, there was some discussion about what a local body could and couldn't do under the federal protections. Clearly, you must have looked at this legislation under that lens. Can, can you talk about how it fits under those federal protections?
What you're talking about are some restrictions in the American with Disabilities Act. The, that law looks at persons recovering from alcohol or drug abuse as being handicapped within the scope of that law. So there are anti-discrimination provisions in the ADA. The concern with the bill, which I think Councilman Fink has addressed, is that it's generally thought that you cannot just ban methadone clinics or regulate them out of business. So what, what this bill does is it's, first of all, it's not limited to methadone clinics. There is a broader application of this bill, because it would apply to any state-licensed medical clinics. And it does, the, under the ADA, you are allowed to use typical zoning, traditional-type zoning regulations, provided it's not so restricted that it applies only to methadone clinics. So we think the bill has addressed, you know, addressed those concerns and is a proper application.
Can you give me an idea of what else would be caught up in this definition of state-licensed medical clinics?
Well, under state law, that's a, that's a, we've defined this as two things, which is a detoxification facility, and you'll see there's going to be an amendment which talks about alcohol and drug abuse programs, which are both defined types of programs that require licensing from the state. There's also other programs that are along the same vein that do not require state licensing, but they're all more or less substance abuse-type programs.
Right, and I, and I see the, the definition, you know, in, in 181101. Where would, where would these places fall in existing code, notwithstanding this ordinance?
Well, they would fall under the, just the general offices, I think it's offices professional in general, like any other offices.
That's correct. Mr. Trump, out.
And can you give me an idea, Mr. Tom, how more or less restrictive would these provisions for state licensing, state-licensed medical clinics be compared to other sensitive zoning issues? For instance, I, I mean, I don't know, how do, how do you zone like an adult strip club? I don't even know what that is, but is, is there other, other places that have specific sensitive zoning requirements besides what we're, what we're looking at in this bill?
There are.
And is this comparable to those?
Well, some of the most sensitive, to use that phraseology, normally would require special exception use. But, but a lot of the, the way the code is structured with conditional uses, they're virtually permitted by right if you meet and adhere to the conditions. So they're not as restrictive per se as something like, you know, some, some of the other special exception uses like waste treatment facility, or, or landfill, or, you know, something that has significant impact on a community.
Mr. Tom? If I can just interject in that, give, back to Ms. Trump, these are like the 1,000 feet, I mean, that's a liquor store, right?
Right.
It's a, a dog bookshop-
That's right.
1,000 feet, so they're comparative, comparable to those types of, of businesses.
That's right. It would be.
And last question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Can you give me some idea, Mr. Tom, of how much real estate does this take out of play in the county? I mean, with all of these provisions, is this, is this a minute amount, and there's still plenty of area left? Or, or if, if you meet all of these, these conditions, you know, is that, is that a fair amount of, of county land we're taking out of play?
We're actually looking into that.
You don't have that?
I don't, I don't have that.
Okay.
Well, if I can add, I think on Mr. Fink's point, liquor stores, they're not regulated in our zoning code, but they are regulated under state law-
Sure.
And they have similar requirements.
Right. I'm, I'm just wondering, like, does this still leave plenty of Anarundel County to locate these things? Because I think we all are aware, and in fact, we all voted for the public health declaration of the opioid epidemic. And, you know, I hope that this council is sincere about wanting to expand treatment options. So I, I would be hesitant to support something that was overly restrictive to where these things could be located. I mean, the, the way this is set up, at first glance, you know, it, it looks reasonable, but without that sort of information, it's hard to make a judgment. I, I see we're likely going to amend it, so I suspect by the next meeting, you might be able to get an answer for that.
Yes, absolutely, and I appreciate that inquiry. And because we are amending the bill, it's going to be continued, hopefully we'll be amending the bill.
Yeah.
And even if, even if these amendments fail, I would probably ask you to postpone your vote, so that we could provide that information to you.
Great.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Pusky, and then Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in following up, and this is for Mr. Swain or Mr. Tom, religious institutions, are there any religious institutions that offer medical services? That was my concern in terms of conflicting use. I just wanted to make sure that you're not aware of anything in the county, because certainly, you know, there may be a facility that, that tries to assist with alcoholism or other things, and I don't want to have a conflict with that. So I don't know if you, if you were aware.
Well, I can say that this would not apply to AA or NA-type programs-
Okay.
But I'm not sure about the exact numbers.
No, I, I'm not aware of any churches or religious facilities that actually provide a clinic environment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fink?
Thank you. Just on the question, well, I certainly don't know how much property this leaves open to Mr. Trump, out of his question, but, you know, the fact that these are pretty much same guidelines for liquor stores, you know, we certainly don't have any issue with getting liquor stores in this county. And are liquor stores allowed in C2, 3, 4, and C1? Do they have them on Court records?
I, I have to check that. I'm fairly certain that they're at least permitted in C3, C4, probably in C1 as well. In C2, it might be considered a necessary or auxiliary used to the main function of offices.
Sure. And, you know, again, we're not taking it out of any zoning, and it's still in all the classifications, you know, obviously not residential, but commercial- classifications, you know, obviously not residential, but commercial, mix, and mixed-use districts, I'm sorry. So, you know, I, I don't know that we're limiting it too much. And furthermore, you know, the issue that we had in Pasadena, we were able to relocate him without a problem in a much better location. You know, the location he ended up going has public transportation and everything else, and he's just as happy, and he was able to find it, you know, just as easily. So I, I don't see it being a limiting bill at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fink, any additional questions?
Mr. Tom, one that popped in my head just while Mr. Fink was speaking, what about the situation where we've already had these in existence? I'm assuming they're grandfathered, and then, you know, what do we do if the, is the grandfathering continue on? Is it a, you know, if, if the business changes hands or something like that? I mean, are there, are there any of these that are out there that we're aware of that are currently would be, you know, immediately a violation should we pass this or have to be grandfathered?
They would be grandfathered under the non-conforming provisions of the code.
But are we aware of any that are out there currently that are going to be impacted?
Uh, I'm not, yeah, I haven't done that research.
Okay. Is that something we could get before the next meeting?
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll open up the public hearing on this bill. We do have one individual sign up to speak. Mr. D'Souza, this is the, this is the time, if you don't mind? And then if there's, he's the only individual signed up at this point, so if anyone else would like to come down, take a seat at the table, feel free to do that. Mr. D'Souza, whenever you're, whenever you're ready, wherever, either there or at the podium, however you prefer.
My name is Peter D'Souza. I'm the CEO of Hope House Treatment Centers located in Croweville. And we need to expand treatment in Anarundale County and wake up the heroin overdose epidemic in our state, as suggested by our county executive and the governor. The archaic I am the exclusion Medicaid law prohibits inpatient programs, which Hope House is an inpatient program, from treating more than 16 patients. We now have 49 beds. We are reducing that to 16 beds because of this law. And we are talking about expansion of treatment. The county executive's office, together with our health officer, the state addiction authority, and Medicaid, is working with us to restructure our program. You know, it's, it's the second largest inpatient program in, in Maryland. And as a part of our restructuring and as a follow-up of the continuum of care, we were planning to open an outpatient program, not a methadone clinic. It's an outpatient program along Route 2, where the patients can have access to public transportation. However, there are private houses immediately behind or near the commercial areas. We were specifically looking at Arundel Office Center 9403, Equahart Road, on the corner of Equahart Road and Route 2, and there are houses right there. And then we were looking at another place, 7503A Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard, that is on the corner of the Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard and Route 2. And there were houses, there were houses right there. So the distinction made by this bill to locate the treatment centers in commercial areas but not close to houses does not play out in reality. We should be more scared of people in our neighborhood who are not receiving any type of treatment, rather than those who are on their road to recovery. The federal parity law states that we should treat addiction on par like any other diseases. But in practice, we are not treating it like any other disease. We do not put these conditions to open our diabetes center. Because of the high potency of the drugs available, together with fentanyl, the lack of support systems for the person, the low cost of drugs and the prescribed medications, we need the support of medications like Suboxone to help stabilize and together with counseling, help the person to recover fully. So we need to educate our citizens about the efficacy of treatment, rather than threatening the lives of treatment providers and the families. And this should not happen in a civilized society. Treatment works because there are thousands of people in our county recovering from addiction, especially from heroin. The county needs to partner with treatment providers to ultimately overpower the heroin overdose epidemic, rather than unintentionally erect barriers to treatment.
Thank you. Thank you for testimony, appreciate that. Mr. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm happy I got to follow, you know, the, your witness, who is explaining to you about the great need for, for, you know, residential treatment programs. I certainly understand your, your concerns about people who do not want, you know, who are afraid of addicts, you know, being, you know, committing crimes within their neighborhoods. But I'm hoping that you'll expand your views of what we can do to help those people who are addicts, who are seeking treatment, who do want to get on with their lives. I'm also wondering, again, the state legislature was considering various bills, and the heroin epidemic is very much, you know, in the news and part of their discussion. And much to my surprise, the younger members of the boomer generation, the people born in the late 50s and early 60s, who are getting up there toward retirement age, are resuming drug use. They were the ones who came of age in the drug era. And so they, since they grew up in that drug era, in that rebellious period of time, a lot of them continued to drink more than my generation, you know, and you guys know I'm a teetotaler, but there were people who did drink. But in my generation, people sort of quit when they had kids. So there's a real serious concern about the older people becoming, having really serious drug and alcohol problems. Alcohol, of course, has been and remains the number one drug problem. But again, I, I would certainly support the testimony of the doctor ahead of me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this bill? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 1415 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1015.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Maryland Transit Administration. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. The resolution before you, Resolution 1015, will provide the county with the authority to apply to the Maryland Transit Administration for operating funds to fund the public transit provided in the county. This is a resolution that is offered annually to the county, excuse me, offered annually by the council. George Cardwell from Planning and Zoning, as well as Greg Swain from the Office of Law are here to answer any questions the council may have regarding this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No questions? Mr. Prokhor.
Mr. Chairman, how are these particular routes, are these particular things chosen? George Cardwell, Office of Planning and Zoning, Transportation Division. These routes are four, we fund four routes through the Regional Transit Agency of Central Maryland, which is actually a contractor to Howard County. Those routes were essentially their legacy routes. They've, they've been around for quite a while. They're in the process of being evaluated to find out if we can get better efficiencies out of what the dollars we're spending and how these, how these buses are running. And that's where, in specific, these grant funds from MTA would be going to or to support those particular routes. And most of them are in West County, Severn area, Hanover, around Port Maine, in Odenton.
Can you just provide any, what, if you know, how they were picked in the first place? You said they're, they're traditional or?
Initially, these routes were, were proposed to the county by an organization, a nonprofit called Corridor Transportation Corporation, which is, was a transit, a transit company formed out of the Baltimore-Washington corridor Chamber of Commerce. Because it's a Chamber of Commerce-esque business, they established these routes with an attempt to try to match people with jobs, lower-income people with jobs, because the basis of the funding initially came from a, from a federal source of funds called Jobs Access Reverse Commute, which predominantly set in to support suburban transit. And normally, the logic of transit is typically to take people from the suburbs into the city. This was to fund people in the suburbs going to concentrations of employment. Of course, in Anarundale County, it's still essentially mostly a suburban land use form. So those, those routes were literally, like I say, they were legacy routes. Sadly, that's the best term I can use for it.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you all. This time we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 1015. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 1015?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. You all have heard me testify before that in its infinite wisdom, the Anarundale County Board of Education assigned me to write materials of, you know, research and write the materials of instruction for part of the 10th grade curriculum, which required students to design the ideal Anarundale County, providing for adequate housing, commercial, industrial, you know, facilities, as well as transportation, sewage, you know, utilities, all, just all kinds of things. And you heard me complain that my protest was, if you got a 10th grader who can do that, he doesn't belong in 10th grade. And if you have a teacher who can do that, the county needs them more than the students do. But because I was assigned to do that and I had to do that, I really did have to look at and try to figure out what to do about mass transit. Because this was in the mid-'70s and we were dealing with the then-existing energy crisis. I was really hard-pressed to come up with good mass transit routes. It certainly appeared that you needed mass transit between Annapolis and DC and Annapolis and Baltimore. And gee, South County people should be able to get to the places they needed to go to. I have concerns about this bill because I'm not sure that we're, we're really looking at what are the needs now? What are the realistic and urgent needs? The millennial generation that have graduated from college are so burdened with student debt that they are not buying cars. They are moving to urban areas where they can, can use mass transit, or moving into mom's and dad's basement, you know, and then using what money they can to buy a car. It's, it's a serious problem and it deserves new examination. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Resolution 1215? I'm sorry, 1015? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 1015 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1215, I'm sorry, Resolution 1215.
Resolution confirming the selection of the site for reconstructed Annapolis Regional Library.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 1215 approves the site location of 1410 West Street for the new Annapolis Regional Library. Here to answer any questions the council may have is Skip Alden from the library, Chris Phipps from Public Works, and Nancy Duden from the Office of Law.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just remind everyone that this site selection process was, is the culmination of a very, what seemed like a very long, very public process that narrowed the sites down to several, and then ultimately, the West Street site was chosen. I know that the city of Annapolis community, and in particular, the surrounding, or the immediately surrounding neighborhood, are very pleased with this decision. So I'm a co-sponsor on this, and I would encourage my colleagues to give it their support so we can move forward building the next great library of Anarundale County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpauer. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you all. This time we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 1215. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 1215? There's no one signed up. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 1215 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1415.
Adornance Concerning Zoning State Licensed Medical Clinics.
Thank you. We have amendments. Please read the title of amendment number one.
This amendment references the application of this ordinance in the purpose paragraph.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions from the administration? Mr. Fink?
We support this amendment.
These are just the next three amendments or the issues that the administration brought up during the work session, all of them. None of them make any substantial changes to the bill, it's just, I want to say technical, but they're not technical as that we're voting on them tonight.
Amendment number one applies to the retroactivity of the ordinance, and we just want to put that in the purpose paragraph.
Sounds good, thank you. Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of amendment number two.
This amendment clarifies the definition of state licensed medical clinic to comport with terms provided in the state code.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt. Thank you. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Administration, have any comments? None?
None. We support.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number two is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of amendment number three.
This amendment modifies conditional use provisions for consistency with Planning and Zoning Enforcement Authority regarding road access and loitering.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
We support the amendment.
Support, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number three.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number three is passed.
Thank you. That concludes Bill 1415, and as amended, will be heard on April 6. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1015.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Maryland Transit Administration.
Thank you. Any final discussion amongst the council? Final comments from the administration?
None, sir. We ask your support, of course.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 1015.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution 1015 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1215.
Resolution confirming the selection of the site for reconstructed Annapolis Regional Library.
Thank you. Any additional discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 1215.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative.